I don't see pastors standing here, so Councilwoman Harris, will you give us our prayer, please? Followed by a pledge of allegiance by Ms. Patricia Lane.
Lord, we're coming for you this afternoon, oh God. Just want to thank you, Lord, for another day. Thank you for your goodness and all your mercy, oh God. You've been so good, you've been so kind. Lord, we thank you all for the city of West Memphis and what you are doing in this city, oh God. Thank you for the mayor that you have given us to run this city, oh God. Bless our police officers, bless our METs, God. Bless our fire department, oh God, in the name of Jesus. Lord, we thank you right now. We give you glory, we give you honor, and we give you praise, oh God. Let our minds be one, oh God, and in a decision, God, glory to your name, Jesus. Lord, I ask you to lift us up, oh God, encourage each and every one, oh God. Cover us with your blood, lift us with your love, wrap us in your mercy, oh God. And, Lord, we forever give you the glory and the honor and the praise. In Jesus' name I pray. Thank you, Lord. Amen. Praise God.
Of the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm going to call this meeting to a close. I'm going to ask our city clerk, would she please call the roll?
Mayor McClendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suta Junior. Counselor Bruce. Counselor Cat.
Here.
Counselor Crum.
Here.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Holt. Counselor Hutchinson. Counselor Mohammed. Counselor Monday. Counselor Mary. Counselor Willis.
We got eight out of ten prayers, and I did hear from Councilwoman Mohammed, and we give prayers to her and her daughter there at the hospital. As well as I did talk with Councilman Dr. Bruce, as well as he at the hospital with his wife. So, keep them definitely in your prayers. You all see the bid openings for the trailer? We only say if we get one bid in, what are you all's wishes?
Make a motion, we refer back to administration.
Second.
All the paper, aye? Opposed? It passes. Our minutes, were there any questions to our minutes besides Counselor McCatt?
Motion to approve is submitted.
Second.
All the paper, aye? Opposed? Those passes as well. We had no old business. We got 01 and 02 of new business. Can I get a council member to make that motion for title only?
Mayor make the motion. I'm sorry, go ahead, councilors.
I make the motion, we'll read about title only.
I got a motion in second, all the paper, aye? Opposed? City attorney?
01 is an ordinance approving the hiring of Derek Clay, doing business as Clay's Construction, to perform contracting work for the city of West Memphis and for other purposes.
I thought to suspend the rules and places on the second reading?
No moves.
All the paper, aye? Opposed?
It's an ordinance approving the hiring of Derek Clay, doing business as Clay's Construction, to perform contracting work for the city of West Memphis and for other purposes.
My motion, for the good of motion for us for first and second.
Second.
All the paper, aye? Opposed?
This is the third reading of an ordinance approving the hiring of Derek Clay, doing business as Clay's Construction, to perform contracting work for the city of West Memphis and for other purposes.
Here in the red for the third and final time, can I get a motion in second to approve?
No moves.
In discussion?
Mayor, I have a little bit of concern, but not that I can't be persuaded here. I just... What... What type of construction would Assistant Chief Clay be?
Any type of residential or commercial use that we need down in building?
Residential remodel.
Remodeling.
Under fifty.
Under fifty.
Under fifty. He has a license with the city. Any other questions? Here we now, all the paper, aye?
Counselor McCrum, may I say something? I did this for years and years, and they approved it for me to do, years ago. Over almost twenty years ago.
I understand, and this is one of the things that I've always had heartburn, even with our previous mayor, Mr. Mayor Johnson. You know? And, you know, I know, but the difference here is that the mayor is related to Mr. Clay. And for some reason, that just gives me...
Well, we don't go too far with that. I mean, everyone knows that Mr. Clay is my brother. He does the work. He got a license with the city. I have a license. Many of us have license to do work for the city, so we just call the roll. We'll go ahead and pass.
Counselor Cat.
Yes.
Counselor Crum.
Pass.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Holt. Counselor Hutchinson.
Yes.
Counselor Monday.
Yes.
Counselor Mary.
Yes.
Counselor Willis.
Seven to one, it passes. Will you get that ordinance number, please?
Ordinance number 2673, 2673.
2673. 02?
02 is an ordinance to establish grass cutting fees for the city of West Memphis and for other purposes.
We talked earlier about remunerating that city, which to the council.
Mayor, as far as suspending rules and places on the second reading, I just didn't know if anybody had any questions before we do that. Or, I knew I had called and asked a couple myself.
I think it's, I thought suspend the rules and place on the second reading, motion in second.
Some move. First.
All right, we have a motion in second. All the paper, aye? Opposed?
It's an ordinance to establish grass cutting fees for the city of West Memphis and for other purposes.
Can I get a motion in second place on this final reading?
Second.
All the paper, aye? Opposed?
This is the third reading of an ordinance to establish grass cutting fees for the city of West Memphis and for other purposes.
Here in the red for the third and the final time, can I get a motion in the second?
Some move.
Second.
In discussion?
Yeah, do we have... Do you have anyone that's going to be in charge of this grass cutting that we're going to be doing a lot of, or something like?
Well, with the ordinance is that basically Director Bowman is going to come up. We just raising the fees, because actually, you know, some people are using the justice, saying, "Does it build your lawn service?" And we can't do that.
Did we not create a grass cutting department?
We created a grass cutting department, yes we did, but it was kind of our, the city property, you know, it's not necessarily for...
Good evening, council members. Basically, this is an ordinance to establish fees for grass cutting for those lots that, of course, people are not taking care of their own personal lots. Or sometimes we have absentee landlords that may not be taking care of their lots. And traditionally, we would have the lawn companies that we hire as contractors to bid or pay a minimal fee, or expect a minimal fee to cut those lots, which wasn't a lot of money. And the problem we were running into is that these property owners would repeatedly not cut their lots, expect the city to cut those particular lots. We would charge that fee to their tax, as a tax lien, for their annual taxes, and they wouldn't mind paying it because it wasn't that much money. So basically, this new fee is to be able to tax this to those property owners' property as tax liens, and encourage them and motivate them to take care of their lot, their properties and their lots themselves. Because it's overwhelmingly expensive and time-consuming for city employees to go out there and cut their lots when we have our own lots to manage, as well as having the contractors and paying the contractors this exorbitant amount of money annually to take care of other folks' lots. Now, I understand there's been times people have said that there may be issues where it's a senior and they may not be able to maintain their lots. If we see this as an issue in the future, maybe we will have to come up with some kind of program to deal with that or address that. But in the interim, we really need something to motivate individuals to take care of their property, especially private residential property owners that have multiple properties and they live out of town and they allow their lots to grow and be overgrown and expect us to cut it. We have to nip this in the bud. And we also want to look at possibly how, at some point in time, we'll be able to get these lots and add to our land bank so we can get these lots developed. If you're an absentee landlord and the land is sitting vacant, and you're constantly accruing all these fees for that property, eventually over time, it's going to be too expensive for you. So what do we do then? We don't necessarily have to be a money-making entity, but we could take these lots and give them to nonprofit home builders or home builders that are building houses that aren't expensive, and just donate the lots to them so they can build a house and someone can move into it. And we'll put it back to you. So, this is our goal of this. It's really a deterrent and a way that we can enforce code enforcement on overgrown lots.
We did...
What length of time do you give a property owner to take care of their... no length of time?
We give them ten days. Once we notice the issue.
Another question. We're having several of them, this is one of my pet peeves, I guess. But we're having several that, some of them are foreclosures. What do we do about foreclosures?
Well, the thing about foreclosures is that even if we do this and attach this amount to their property, that amount will still be attached to their property. So, in the process of any transaction where that property is exchanged or purchased or so forth, that amount that we charge to them for cutting that property will go with the property. So our goal is to collect that amount before the property is exchanged or what have you. Now, say for instance, I know Mr. Cat brought this up before. We really have to ensure that that property, when it's sold, that we collect our money on those liens. Or, that entity or the county works with us, if it's a special circumstance where we might be able to waive it. Say for instance, if it's a family that want to build on a lot and they're not in the business of managing real estate, and it's preventing them from wanting to build on the lot because of the lien, there might be ways that we can navigate around that to ensure that that person can get their property and make it useful and viable.
And also, that will have to come through the council to remove those.
Yes.
I guess one thing bothers me is, you know, you have properties that's well-kept, you've got one that's not, and it does decrease the value of area.
Absolutely.
You know, and I wanted to get after it this year and get it done.
Yeah, we really want to get after it ourselves. As we've been going through the mayor's tour around at the various schools, we've heard a lot about code enforcement and overgrown lots. So, that's one of the things I've been really into since I've taken this job. So, we really going to hammer down, once we get this approved, we're ready to start sending these invoices to these properties owners so they can get the message.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Bowman. No, if I may, bring you back up. Or if you can address the question we had asked earlier about the fifty percent increase.
Yes. So, Mr. Cat asked about the prices being a little bit higher if the property is well-overgrown and exceedingly overgrown. So, there's a possibility that we can increase the price to fifty percent of what's on here if the grass is above eighteen inches. Eighteen inches is when we will cite a property owner for not cutting their grass. In some cases, we have grass this high. Our crews can't even manage it. And our contractors might not be able to manage it, so they have to bring in bushhogs or tractors to cut it. And sometimes it's a large field. So in that case, we can increase the price at least fifty percent of what you see on here, higher. And a lot of times, that won't happen with residential properties, but it may happen with a commercial property or a large field.
I know, at your award, there's some areas they almost have to have a bush hog to cut it. You know what a bush hog is, don't you?
Yes.
Also, you know, the lot is right there beside, what's that, Queens Inn?
Yes.
And that lot grows high, so.
And hopefully, this will motivate people to also find a use for their lots. If you're going to leave your lot there vacant and not cut it, and then we constantly charging you, at some point, you might want to sell it or donate.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Bowman, in pre-council, we were talking, I mentioned that the rates from the initial price list went up to the new list, this new list.
So...
What my question is going to be is like, the five acres or greater than five acres, we've got five hundred dollars on there?
Right.
Okay. It seemed like to me it ought to be more than five hundred dollars.
You're right.
I agree with you, and you have the right to suggest that increase.
Well, I mean, you got two fifty up here for one, up to one acre. And five times two fifty is like twelve hundred bucks, yeah.
I'm in agreement with that, if the council is.
I won't be the first one to argue with you on that. We can recover cost, no offense and buts. And like I say, over the next two or three months, you know, maintaining records of how long it takes those bushhogs to get from one part of town to the other, and how long were they on that acreage, time, equipment depreciation, expenses, everything else, yes, we can come up and say, there's no doubt we can increase that fee. But I'd just like to have a little bit more data before we just...
Yes.
We talked a little bit about spraying. Is that something you think you might be able to bring back to us in the near future?
Yes, I can. In some cases, we do spray properties. Councilman Cat, or councilperson Cat, actually made a statement and called me, and we kind of discussed it a little bit. That is a possibility as well, and using these fees for spraying the property too. But we do have to be concerned about the environmental quality of using those sprays. So, we will look at researching and trying to find ways where we may be able to spray it and save money and time rather than having contractors or city staff go out and cut the properties. I'm being realistic, though. Like, my background is environmental planning, and we've had residents call us and say that we sprayed the neighbor's yard and the runoff has caused their grass to die.
Again, spraying the wrong product, spraying at the wrong time of the day, not taking in humidity factors. They just need better training. We talked about possibly getting them to the co-op meetings and at least two of our employees, let them sit in that. And I think it'll be very beneficial to them.
Agreed.
Another concern I have is increasing the fees, I think, is reasonable. But we have to file these quarterly, monthly. We cannot wait and do it semi-annual or annual. Where these properties are going to sell, they're going to flip, the lien's not going to be a record. We have no legal recourse against the new owner.
And I agree. And that's something I didn't know much about until I reached December of last year, where you brought that up. And that's something I'll bring back to my staff. If we could start filing them as we go, even if we have the same repeat offender and we have to continue to add that amount, we should, and I agree. So that, in the process of the property being transitioned, we can capture that lien.
Yes, I talked to the title companies, and they say until you file it, this public record, they're not going to collect it. They're just going to ignore it, it doesn't exist.
Right.
One last question.
Cannot. It's private property. You cannot assess somebody. If you bought a house with a four hundred dollar lien and it wasn't your responsibility, you're just going to gladly walk in here and write a four hundred dollar check? No, ma'am, you're not. The ordinance cannot exempt federal, state, private property rights, federal housing administration. All those things are going to tell you that the lien's not of record. You cannot collect it.
So what he's saying, if it hasn't been recorded with the county yet, we can't get it? So, we probably...
You could take the previous owner to court?
Right.
Because they're the ones who incurred that debt.
Right.
But if anyone in this room bought a house and all of a sudden you get a tax bill says you owe four, five, six hundred dollars?
Right.
You're going to come screaming.
Right. And what I've learned, even in the closing process for the properties we purchased, the title company can catch that too. So, that might be a part of the fees that the seller has to pay in order to dispose of the property.
So, the title company can catch it, but it's got to be of record.
Okay.
That's the key for the title company, because that's what they do, is they check the public records. And if it's not of record, then they have no responsibility because there's nothing there for them to check.
Well, I assure you, we'll do a better job of capturing it because we need to.
You know, if we file them quarterly, I think that'll go a long way to probably decreasing this from happening very often. Still going to happen time to time, but it won't be near as often.
Absolutely.
Mr. Bowman, one last question. What if we're out there cutting this lot and we have, we hit something? And who's going to be responsible for damage of the equipment if we hit something out there in that lot? You know, that grass is D-deep, you know?
Are you saying if I send a contractor out or a city lawn guy or grass cutting guy and they damaged the equipment that they're using?
Yeah.
I mean, you could, I don't feel like you could hold a property owner responsible. We just have to make our...
That's not really a question for him to answer.
Yeah.
That's, that's...
Is that your question?
I mean, I'm not going to answer it either. I'm going to tell you that it depends on the facts and circumstances of each situation. But the city has governmental immunity for negligence, so, I mean, it wouldn't be intentional, I wouldn't think, usually, by the city. You're not going to get anything out of a property owner who can't cut their grass, so.
Thank you. Spray something. Just go out and spray some grass so Mr. Cat will be happy.
All right.
It's more cost-effective, it's less labor-intensive on our employees.
I'm with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, all the paper, aye? Opposed? It passes. Would you get an ordinance number?
Ordinance number 2674, 2674.
The number is 2674. Permission request, permission for the mayor to sign an American company, American Remont Company Sourceway Build Agreement. I'm going to ask you all, if you all would table that for a couple of weeks, for two weeks.
I make a motion to adjourn for two weeks.
Motion in second to table it for two weeks. We just got to finalize the things on the land. They give us a little time to get some more updates on some things, but I think that's a great idea. Matter of fact, Counselor McKenna is one of the ones who came up with the idea. We've been working on it. But he spoke on it at the last meeting, you know, this has been something great. It's also going, hopefully, it's going to help our raise grant opportunity as well, what we're trying to do through the bios, as well as with our big river crossing, as well to connect all that together with biking here in the city. So, I got a motion in second. All the paper, aye? Opposed? All right, just table for two weeks. Community reports, far?
Hang on just a second here, I'm looking for my stuff.
Did you lost it?
I lost it. Okay. Assistant Chief Clay's out in the audience, and if I say something out of line now, you got to straighten it out. Okay.
He will.
We've got, we had our meeting on Tuesday, June 18th. We had no hires, no resignations, no promotions, and no vacancies. But also, well, we do have two vacancies in the EMS side. Retirement, we got Tony Lauderdale coming up with retirement with twenty-eight years. Who? Troy. Thank you. Troy Lauderdale, twenty-eight years, he's retiring. PPE, we've given out the self-contained breathing apparatus. They're here. And they've been distributing those out to the shifts. Vehicle maintenance, we did purchase a new used fire truck for ten grand. And I understand it's a sister of another one we purchased from a company up in Purdue, Kentucky. Building maintenance, we've got roof leaking in Station Two and Three. We have one person in the fires, standard training, and let's see here. We made... To date, we've made twenty-one hundred and ninety-eight EMS calls. The collection year-to-date are a hundred eighty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents. Update on the ISO audit they were in, and they did the audit the other day. We should be hearing back in a couple of months from that audit. And, did I miss anything? Well, I mean, we had the summer work program. I thought this was a neat deal. They painted the fire hydrants, and the red ones belong to the city and the blue ones belong to the private. And that's good to know when you're going out to make a call. We have zero out-of-service fire hydrants, and that concludes the fire commission report.
Thank you, Counselor McCrum. We're going to move it. Airport?
Airport. We had the meeting this morning. Unfortunately, I had something I had to get done, so I was absent. But the North Apron Rehab Project is underway. The Field Farm Rehab Project Tank is expected around the first of July. The Department of Aeronautics approved a grant for spall repairs on the apron and taxiways. And that concludes that report.
Thank you. We had no other committees or commissions who met, all right? I had no appointments. We have one presentation with the fire department. We have a special guest, Ms. Lisa Wright. Will you come forward, please, to the mic?
Mayor McClendon and members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity
Thank you.
to share with you a recognition that we have for the West Memphis Fire Department. Would you like to come up? And we do have a presentation. All right. Okay, we can go to the next slide. Right, on behalf of Methodist University Hospital's cardiovascular program, we'd like to recognize the West Memphis Fire Department for their outstanding contributions to our cardiovascular program and to the community we serve. The West Memphis Fire Department EMS Division, with their commitment to our cardiovascular program, has played an active role in the accreditation process of our cardiovascular program. The relationship that we built together has helped save so many lives. We can go to the next. Within our relationship and collaboration with West Memphis Fire Department and our cardiovascular team, we've obtained accreditations through the American College of Cardiology, which is the governing board for cardiovascular programs across the nation. We currently hold five accreditations through American College of Cardiology for our heart failure program, our chest pain program, our cath lab, our EP program. And then we were actually awarded the overall highest honor of heart care center. This was done in collaboration in our partnership with our AMS providers, including West Memphis Fire Department. Chief Brackensey, as you could see in the picture, the previous picture was a part of those accreditations. In addition to this, we've received the platinum award for the last three years, and we'll receive it, we've already been notified for 2024, from the National Registry, which is a registry where all of the heart attack patients across the nation are entered into a database and compared for the care provided to those patients. Included in that registry is also information... Included in that registry is also information from West Memphis Fire Department. They look at the information from the time the nine-one-one call is made by a patient all the way through until they're treated at the hospital. That's a huge accomplishment. That is a shared accomplishment with our team. We can go the next. I'm not controlling it, so. There we go. That's good. Thank you. Thank you. This is also recognition from the state of Arkansas for the program that we shared, recognizing the amazing work that's been done in this community and in this program. And we wanted to congratulate your team for that acknowledgement by the state of Arkansas. We can go the next. And not only regionally and statewide, but we've been recognized as a team, the program that we share, by Becker's Review, which is a review for hospitals across the nation. And we were recognized as one of the top seventy-five hospitals for cardiac care in the nation. We were number fifteenth, as you see there. We can go the next. In addition, we were selected based on the accreditation and the reviews of our programs by American College of Cardiology to be an author of the new guidelines that were established in twenty twenty-one for the treatment of cardiac patients or chest pain patients presenting to hospitals across the nation. And we can go the next. As well as, we were able to contribute to a program that has saved many, many lives across the nation for those patients that present to us already in cardiogenic shock on arrival to the hospital. This was a collaboration with our pre-hospital teams, who actually recognize these patients in the field, as well as the heart attack and notifies prior to arrival. The work that we were able to do, historically, those patients had a fifty percent chance of survival, and we've been able to increase that survival rate to eighty-five percent through this program. So, how did we do it? And we can go the next slide. There is no metric for the key to success of the program. What makes this program work are the heroes that provide the care. This'll make me cry. And these are the guys within our West Memphis Fire Department E M S, who stand between us and harm's way every day. As there is no metric, it did bring to mind the statement that was once made by Theodore Roosevelt. "It's not the critic accounts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who actually, who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes short again and again, because there is no effort without error and shortcoming, but who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at best knows, in the end, the triumph of high achievement." And I can share with you, I watch these guys every day and the work they do, and it is amazing. It is truly amazing. I'd like to recognize, we can go the next, the leadership that Chief Brackensey provides us. He actually serves on our Methodist Levana Healthcare A M I, which is the clinical word for heart attack team. He helps us make decisions about what that structure is gonna look like. He looks at the quality of the program and contributes a tremendous amount of support from what happens in the field. You can go the next. We can go the next. There's a lot of training, intense training, that's involved in the work that's done by West Memphis Fire Department E M S Division. We work on the education as far as the care of these patients. I don't know that our community is aware, but your team has the capability to obtain the twelve E D K G in the field, where the STEMI is diagnosed, that's done by your paramedics. They have the capability to actually contact and call our cardiologists through a technology called Pulsera, which you guys provided. So, your team actually activates our cath lab at Methodist University whenever they determine that there's a heart attack in the field. In addition, every case that we do, and you can see here, we look at, the E K G is the E K G that's obtained by West Memphis Fire Department, and on the right is the cath, actual cath before and after of that patient. So we look at those from the time the nine-one-one call is made, all the way through to the completion of the case. Also, you guys made possible for us to have the technology, which allows that communication to occur, where actually the E M S, the paramedic, can actually be communicating with our E D physician, our E D team, as well as our cardiologist and our cath lab team. That's through technology known as Pulsera. Next. And last but not least, is the time that is spent by your E M S providers and Chief Brackensey to educate the community. One of the major contributors to mortality in a patient whose heart stops in the field is the fact that very few of them get C P R in the field. And there's a new form of C P R called hands-only C P R, and the public is more likely to perform that than if they have to remember those very long algorithms, or they have to breathe for someone. So there's a new initiative across the nation to do that, and Chief Brackensey is doing work on that, as well as Chief Clay. And there's actually an event next week through the Chamber of Commerce, where they'll educate twenty of your businesses here in the community on how to do that and provide kits that will allow them to pass it on. And last but not least, in spite of everything we do, cardiac disease is still the number-one killer of more men and women than anything else in the nation. And so this is why we continuously strive to work as a team to get better and better at what we do. When you ask, why do we do this? Why do we fight this battle? You know, in interviews, when they are profiling people, one of the questions they often ask them are, if you could have a dinner with anyone that you could choose, who would you choose? And usually, the responses are famous people that they've always wanted to know or what they would want to do. And recently, I read one, and what they said was, if I could have one more meal with the people in my family I lost, who are no longer here, and friends that I miss every day that I had lunch with. And so that's why we do what we do, is in hopes to give, give those opportunities. So thank you again for the opportunity, and thank you for the lives that you save with us.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Thank you for all you do.
Just real quick, I just wanna thank Ms. Lisa Wright for coming over. She's been working with this Fire Department for, since two thousand and eight. I can remember when we only had capability of just putting a heart monitor on. We couldn't do the twelve lead, so. I really wanna thank her for the education. She taught me a lot, and I've learned every, a lot about reading the E K Gs. I go out to like, with Major Lauderdale, who's getting retired, but we go to like, different places, doctors' offices, and teach A C L S, which we teach even doctors how to read the E K G, the way she taught us to read it. But she comes over and trains all these men and women right here, and the job they're doing when they go out is really phenomenal. Our, our times, everything, to get this accreditation is really because of the, not the training that they receive, but how they take that training and put it into practice. So I just wanna, this is really for all of y'all. Y'all do the work. Yep. So I just want them to know that. But also, Mayor, you know, I really appreciate, you know, as far as the E M S, how supportive you have been, and all the city council member, the new amelices, the cardiac monitors that we have to be able to do this, being able to purchase the best technology to recruit the best paramedics to this city. So I really thank y'all. And I just think y'all deserve a lot of credit. Y'all are heroes, too, along with these men and women, so.
May I say something, Mayor?
Sure.
I really appreciate you guys. You guys have really took care of a lot of people, and I'm one of them. Thank y'all so much. Thank y'all so much. I remember I got, I had a spell last year, and I couldn't call nobody but Chief Clay. My phone had died, and I got a paramedic to call Chief Clay, and they got me to Methodist Hospital. And I'm thankful. I am thankful to all of you guys. I've had them come out to my house and take care of me. Thank y'all.
Chief, I want to say thank you for the great job you're doing. Chief Clay for the great job, and all the men and women who do what you all do, because I know it's my hard stuff. I want y'all to get it back going.
Thank God for you all.
He has stayed stopped, though. We're gonna move forward. I got a few announcements. First, the first thing, do you all see this page right here? This is our overlay program. This is for our streets. You all know that last year I came to you all, and we had like two million dollar worth of work, but you all decided to do half of, up that amount, and this is what the M P O and Ward, the city engineer, was able to come up with to do the milling and the overlay on this project right now. I think Nick is out for bid, right? He's out for bid. So in two weeks, we should, once we advertise for two weeks, they'll come back and let us know where we at, and just to go to do these streets right here. Is that very good? All right. Also, I did want a few announcements. Ridge Road Bridge is continuing to move forward. I think Ward gave us a description of where we at on Ridge Road Bridge, so we glad that's moving, continue moving forward. Also, last, the other day, the National League of Cities came here with their hundred-year anniversary, and they asked us to stop in the city of West Memphis, and I wanna thank Director Rose for leading and getting them here. That was a great accomplishment. Then, I'm something I'm very proud of, is that our Juneteenth Festival was, the parks, Rosa Jones and and Ms. Carolyn Anthony, you all done a wonderful job in the entire staff.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all. Thank y'all.
Our Juneteenth Festival, I'm gonna say it's off the chain. So, and I look forward to many more. Ms. Anthony, thank you for the leadership and the great job in moving that forward. Also, you know that we got our Freedom Fest getting ready to come up, which is a great event we have always did in our city. It's excellent on the twenty-eighth of this month, June twenty-eighth. It's gonna be at Tilda Rogers Park. Yeah, Tilda Rogers Park. Our Freedom Fest is also another great event that we've been having for some time. I'm confident that that as well is gonna be definitely off the, off the chain again, and it's gonna continue to be a great event. We got some great music and food, fun. We're looking for all the people of West Memphis and around, surrounding areas to come out and to enjoy our Freedom Fest on June twenty-eighth. Also, you know, our city council meeting is actually scheduled on July the fourth, which is Independence Day. So, thinking that we wanna change that date, because I may be the only one working.
It's all right with me.
Yeah, so, what day do you all wanna change the council meeting to? You all wanna do it July the second? Well, the next, the following Thursday? Y'all wanna do it the following Thursday? Oh, I'm just throwing out suggesting Council Wheeler, Councilwoman Harris.
We don't have no problem with it. We can do it the following Thursday. I don't have any problem with it.
Will you make that motion?
I motioned that we have council meeting the following Thursday instead of July the fourth.
I'll second it.
All pay by? Oppose? Everyone good? So our council meeting for the first Thursday, and July will be council, and it will be the following Thursday, will be the second Thursday, and July, July eleventh. July the eleventh.
So I have a, I have a statement about the eleventh. I sent out a meeting request for the council for July eleventh. It's from nine to twelve. And that's, that's for the new system training.
Then come right back here at twelve-thirty.
Yeah, so I just wanna remind y'all of it. So we'll see each other all day.
Now, remember, she giving you all this information, and I know most of y'all know, but she giving you this information now.
I didn't hear you talk.
We'll be having in-person training for you all. So it's gonna be about showing you how to work the system, how to pull reports, everything y'all need to know.
What time you gonna do that?
It's from nine to twelve, July eleventh.
Okay.
Okay. It's at the West Memphis Utilities Training Room.
Oh, that's lunch, isn't it?
Huh?
That's lunch, isn't it?
You gonna cook, Ms. Ellen?
I will have some food available.
Well, I tell you all something, what it can help us do better, it can help us to go now paperless, so we can bring our laptops.
Yeah.
So, and that'd be great for the ones that can. Also, I didn't have any more announcement, but I did wanna make a quick announcement. I see three other individuals that were from our Take Action Tour here. And they all said that they would be here, and I thank you all for coming out, supporting, and the next, next, well, the next council meeting, the first, what would be the eleventh, the one we just talking about. Continue to bring out more people. Like I said, we were starving one, two, or three. We know the high miss fridge here, so nothing before you all, so. But definitely, if we can just continue to bring out, bring out our friends, so everyone will know what's going on. We want everyone to be informed. We definitely being transparent. Anything that you all wanna know. These are council people, actually, two of us out because they had emergency with their family, and Council McKenna and Councilwoman Hudson, they had to leave early, but definitely continue coming to our council meetings, because sometime it just be us and the crickets. So it's definitely good that I see you all in the face, see your face in the building, so I'm thankful for that. Republic County spoke at pre-council, so they're not gonna be here for citizen requests. Anyone else wanna have anything before we get out of here?
I got something I wanna say, please, if you don't mind. I don't ask for a lot. This is my city. I love this city. I was born here, raised here, raised my children, raised my grandchildren, and now I'm raising my great-grandchildren. We have a problem with these guns in the street. Our children's killing our children. If we have a problem with that, we have a serious problem with that. I, I, you know, I've been here all my life, so when, when somebody's. I, 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 you know, I've been here all my life, so when, when somebody's child get killed, I know of the parents, grandparents, I know somebody. It hurts me in my heart. Young men lay these guns down. We gotta, we, we gotta do something about this. We, we gotta stop all this killing in our city. It's so small, but, uh, they kill each other like it's, it's nothing. You going to jail, you somebody that lost their life. There's two lives gone. The families on both sides are hurt for the rest of their life from that. We gotta lay these guns down, young black men. That's what I'm talking about, lay these guns down.
I echo your sentiments because in this last situation, a 15-year-old lost his life and the suspect was 15 and 16, so. I, I echo. It's time to give him something to do and, and, and parents gotta be parents, so it's a whole lot, so I echo what you saying.
Thank you.
Like I've always said, until they come out to pull pits and hit the streets, we got these problems. We can take care of them, but they got to come out to pull pit and hit the streets because that's where the problem is at. The problem's not in the church, it's in the streets. And then we can come together and unite in prayer and we can pray our way through these streets 'cause I know it works.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Crone, you, you say something?
I second it.
I'll be, ah, opposed?
I love you, Ms. Anthony.